I'd like to call the June 6th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First order of business is the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin. Sharon, it's all yours.
Thank you and good morning Chairman Brink, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners today in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. Bless all of our citizens, our first responders, and those defending our nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Fair pledge by Assistant County Manager Mr. Ben Warren, please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize our elected officials, Sheriff Miller for being here. Thank you Sheriff. Alderman Rick Grant from North Topsol Beach, Omega Jarman, our Register of Deeds, Mr., not elected official, but Mr. Barry Collins Superintendent of Schools and Colonel Chris Thomas, Colonel of our Onslow County Sheriff's Office. Thank you for being here. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda, and that's at the end of the meeting before we will respond to public comment. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the meeting agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any of the Commissioners would like to have removed for later discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now, Ms. Griffin, at item three, public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this morning we have five citizens who have signed up for public comment. We will have additional speakers during the public hearing, which comes later for the budget public hearing. But during this public comment period, we do invite citizens to come in the order in which they have signed up. When I call your name, please come to the podium, repeat your name and your address. Please address your remarks to the Board as a whole and do not call out individual Commissioners individually. Commissioners do not respond during the public comment period, but rather at the end of the meeting if they wish during the Commissioners comments. We do ask you to remember that you have exactly five minutes. Please conclude your remarks at the end of five minutes and please ensure that you are using professional language and that you keep it very professional in front of the Commissioners. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. TJ Best of 209 Faison Lane in Hubert.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is TJ Best, lives at 209 Faison Lane in Hubert. I am a member of the Onslow County EMS Division. I'm here to speak about the current situation we are in right now. I want to start off by saying one word, crisis. We are currently in a crisis. Crisis is defined as a time of intense difficulty, trouble, or danger. That is the word that best describes the current state of our EMS division and in turn the community that we all live in. Part of this crisis is due to a staffing shortage. Because of this staffing shortage, our response times to critical calls can sometimes be upwards of 30 minutes or more. Patients that are having a cardiac event, a stroke, choking, up to cardiac arrest cannot afford to wait these extended periods. We often request outside agencies to come and take calls for us because we have zero ambulances available to respond to calls. Our crews are experiencing higher than expected burnout. Everybody knows that EMS has a high rated burnout and it's even more amongst our employees right now. They're exhausted after running upwards of 50 calls in a single 12-hour shift. They end up staying late to assist our citizens in their time of need and they still keep coming back the next shift. This constitutes a crisis. One of the big causes of our staffing shortage is our pay is no longer competitive in the EMS market compared to our surrounding counties and agencies. The surrounding county and agencies have recognized the problem and have raised the pay for their EMS divisions to compete within the market in order to attract new applicants and maintain retention. That is something that we have not done. While we have always experienced a high turnover rate with people going to other agencies for better pay, continuing their education, it's even greater now. The difference between then and now is we were formerly, when I started five years ago, one of the highest paid agencies around in eastern North Carolina. We had no problem attracting new applicants, new employees. We had no problems with our primary retention. We've now shifted toward the lower end. Many surrounding counties are now paying higher salaries with a yearly call volume equal to approximately half of what our EMS division runs per year. Even with the proposed 10% increase, we still fall short of several surrounding counties. If you look to the back corner of the room, you'll see many of my coworkers. They are back here, everybody's concerned. And we're all here to respectfully ask that you support our EMS division by increasing pay to a level that appropriately reflects the high standards, high stress, and overwhelming call volume that these crews experience every shift. The crews deserve it and more so the community deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Angel of 217 Portside Drive.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Angel. I live on Portside Drive in Sneeds Ferry. I spent 50 years as a businessman in Maryland, growing a business from nothing to approximately 10 million gross sales a year. This wasn't done by magic, it was done by taking care of the customer. Customer was our number one priority at all times. My life has drastically changed. I'm now retired and I have become your customer. I require, I need the services that you as a county offer me in my retirement, especially EMS. I'm 82 years old and fortunate to be in good health, but who knows, tomorrow, the next day. If your crews are at half staff, that means I may wait 40 minutes, 45 minutes. In the throes of a stroke, heart attack, you probably will be too late for me. The neighborhood I live in is growing rapidly, new homes, lots of income for Onslow County. I spent enough time building income in my business to understand how it works for you. My hope and my thoughts are that you will support these ladies and gentlemen and give them the proper funding and staff that they need to do the job that I, your customer, require. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Our next speaker for public comment is Mr. William Days of 823 Mill River Road.
Good afternoon. My name is William Dare. I am a former paramedic for Onslow County EMS. I started in February of 2007 and I quit approximately a month and a half ago. The state of your EMS system is absolutely unacceptable. This is not a sudden problem. It has a great many problems. The pay is one of them. These have been going on for decades, as far as I can tell. When I started here, the call volume was approximately 12,000 calls a year. We had seven trucks that ran 24/7. They were all double medic. Currently, with staffing issues, we're lucky if we can field four to five trucks per shift. Half to two-thirds of our employees are EMT basics, where at a significantly lower level of skill. And we are running twice the call volume, if not more. We have had a steady 5% to 10% increase every year from the year previous. That's exponential, that is not linear. If you do not do something soon, I am worried that you will not have an EMS system within six months, let alone a year. Surrounding counties are raising their pay significantly compared to what we have. And while most of the people who have left have left over working conditions and not pay, you will not have anybody new coming in to replace the ones who have left. The few who are left will leave for better pay and then you will have no one. We have had response times, that I know of, calls being put in pending for upwards of an hour to an hour and a half, upwards of two hours. As a professional, I am embarrassed. As a citizen, I am outraged. This cannot stand anymore. I am begging you to finally please do something because your system is collapsing and you're not going to have one soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dairs. Our next speaker is Mr. Dennis Bregard of 526 Rock Creek Drive.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I certainly appreciate the folks who are walking up here and speaking about EMS. It sounds like it's a very important entire situation. I'm here to speak about something a little bit different. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Children's Museum. I was just elected to be President of the Board this past January, which brings me full circle because I was with that group when they first got their nonprofit, probably 15 years ago, it feels like. So with COVID and the changeover, I wanted to come up here and kind of just give you a quick update on a few things to let you know some of the stuff that we've been kind of working with. With COVID, we did manage through it, although we did experience an absolute and complete shutdown, followed by a limited number of people coming to the doors. So I would like to make you understand that we operate in a position where we're not requiring your help, which is a good position to be in. You know, we kind of have a demand that keeps us in a position where people are showing up and the doors stay open. The small amount you gave to us, we certainly appreciate and we just want to let you know that we don't have to have those things. So what you do for us, we definitely appreciate that we have those. We've reached now an extent, even after COVID, where we're starting to see about 4,000 people per month. So our demand is very strong in what we do. We have about 455 families that have actually obtained memberships with us. I want to let you know about a little thing we have called Museums for All. 753 people have visited for date and it's a way to broaden the museum's visitor base and reach out to underserved communities at a discounted admission rate for those who present a SNAP or EBT card. We're offering educational programs five days a week that are included with admission and we serve about 450 people a month in those. We have interactive story of times, art exploration, baby and me, toddler time, a science club, which is partnered with Nectar, and an engineering club as well. I just wanted to tell you something that our museum director told me about that I thought was really interesting because I know a lot of people talk about universal pre-K and that's a big issue right now. There was actually something that happened in Tennessee where they instituted universal pre-K and in 2009, 2010, the program actually led to worse academic and behavioral outcome for kids. What they found was that a determination was made, it was more important for young children to play than for them to be in a classroom. Our local teachers realize this in elementary age because they're showing up and they're bringing their children to the museum for what we offer, which is something that's more hands-on as opposed to sitting in a classroom. This museum was put together actually by a couple educators who were traveling to Wilmington to do the same thing. Just the last five months, we've had 30 field trips from Onslow County, Surf City, Burgal, Albertson, and other areas. And additionally, we have homeschool groups, private schools, daycares, et cetera, to come in. Just want to let you know about what we're doing. I intend to be here a little bit more often and I'll probably focus on different areas over time. But we want to thank you for your support and kind of let you know we're here, we're doing well, we're open, and we feel like we're a big part of this community and we're going to continue to be even a greater part. Thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bregard. Our final speaker during public comment period is Mr. Kyle Mullenax of 310 Creon Court.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. So I actually work for a different system outside of Onslow County, but I am a citizen of Onslow County, been for 18 years now. We are running the exact amount of trucks that you guys are running in this county with a population of 55,122 against your population of 204,576. I don't know if anybody knows in a cardiac arrest what the most critical part of cardiac arrest is. It's high-quality CPR within a few minutes of downtime. The brain starts to lose oxygen at approximately six minutes. If you don't get that going, that's less likely that that person is going to make I also go to Coastal Carolina Community College here, so I have done clinicals on the trucks here. With that, I've seen how long a call can stay in the queue for something. Whether it be a fall for a 95-year-old person that can quickly turn into something like a cardiac arrest. Those falls come in as a fall, but we don't know what's going on. And when a truck has to go from Richlands all the way out to Swansboro, when it's already been in the queue for 20 to 25 minutes, you're looking at over an hour for us to get to that person. Again, we're running about half of the call volume, you guys are, and we are getting the same amount of pay. With that also, people are going to be in RN. Why? Because you can either go paramedic or you can go RN with about the same amount of schooling. With that being said, paramedicine is dwindling down because of pay. We're not able to keep up with the RN. When I can go and I could try to save a life, most of these people want to be here. And I say that because I can go to Target stocking a shelf for $24 and not have the responsibility that I have as a paramedic or an EMT advanced or an EMT even a basic. But yes, a lot of people are leaving because they can find work elsewhere and get better pay. So they've covered most of the other stuff that I've covered, so I urge you to consider, you know, what we're paying these as a citizen of this county, not as somebody in EMS, but as a citizen if they're going to respond to me. So I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenax. That concludes our public comment period. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we'll move on to item four, presentation. Ms. Griffin, I think you're going to do a budget presentation for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And just as a point of order, I will do the budget presentation and at the conclusion of that, I will open up the public hearing for the budget where we will have additional speakers and it'll be a time that they can come up and give their input. I will close the public hearing for the budget and then at that time, the budget will be open for the Commissioners' discussion and questions and to get anything answered that might come up as we do the budget presentation, if that suits the Board.
I would like for the Commissioners to, if you have questions or any concerns, to direct those questions to our county manager and then if she needs a department head to come up, then you can call whatever appropriate department head to elaborate on anything that you may want to elaborate on, if the Commissioners would do that for us. I think that would be more streamlined.
Thank you, sir. I am pleased today to present to you a balanced budget. It meets the growing needs of our community. I believe it's physically responsible. It addresses our long-term problems. It helps educate our kids and it does help take care of our hard-working employees. First today, I'm going to talk about the challenges we've faced in this budget season. Then I'm going to talk about how we are meeting those challenges with this proposed budget. Going into this budget year, we have had some significant challenges. One of our challenges this year is actually a good challenge to have and it is community growth. We do live in a place that is wonderful to live in and we have a lot of people who want to live here. Our population grew 15.1% from 2010 to 2020. Growth has further accelerated since 2019 and we can tell that by indicators such as the number of building permits that are being requested. Overall, our building permits are up 18%. Residential building is up about 4.5%. Building inspection demands about 5.4%. Growth is good, but growth stretches our service demands on all of our departments, not just planning and development, who's doing all these inspections, but also our Health Department, our Register of Deeds, who is recording all of this, our GIS Department, and all of our other departments. One group of employees in particular that see higher demands as families move in are our social services departments. Particularly in the current economy, we have seen an extraordinary increase in the requests for economic services. Crisis and low-income energy assistance applications and every other type of social service request has increased. We've also seen child protective services and adult protective services have increases in higher workloads as our citizens become stressed by the pandemic, by the economy, and by the rising inflation rate. As you've heard a little bit this morning, our first responders are also stressed and under more demand. All of our emergency responders are actually feeling the strain. Our Sheriff's Office has seen increases in demands. Our calls into 911 have increased and in fact, we've never come back down since our increases with COVID-19 with our 911 calls. Our fire calls are up 17.4%. Our emergency services calls overall are up 7.3%. And our 911 telecommunications dispatched 139,000 calls in the past year. In addition to having the call volume go up, other challenges are presenting themselves to our fire service. We're having a reduction in the number of volunteers that are coming out to run the fire service. And we have a problem with aging equipment and infrastructure. To keep our insurance service office, or ISO ratings, low, and that's important when it comes to homeowner's insurance, and more importantly, to respond quickly when our citizens are in need or their house is on fire, we actually have to have trucks that can be driven, that roll, that are reliable. We currently fund 20 fire departments at Onslow County Government. Many of the fire engines, tankers, and other apparatus are so old, we can't even find parts to replace on them when they get broken. If you looked at replacing fire engines and tankers when they're 30 years old, then within five years, we will need nine fire trucks. Right now, at today's prices, they're about 650,000 each if you get a basic fire truck. We also need, in the next five years, among those 20 fire departments, two tankers, two service units, brush units, and this is if we replace again at 30 years. In addition to having equipment problems, we've got fire station issues. If you look across Onslow County, these volunteer fire departments often are housed in stations that are well beyond their years and need maintenance or replacement. One of our stations is more than 70 years old. We have four additional that are 50 years old. As you can see, it's important that we face the challenge that our fire service is running out of volunteer staffing and has infrastructure and equipment issues at the same time. This problem has been building for decades. Another challenge we faced during this budget season, and you've heard a little bit about it already, is inflation, the unprecedented economic pressures that we're all enduring right now. And that includes the job market changes. Everything costs more now, everything is a little bit harder to do, and that's true for everybody. But at Onslow County Government, if we don't keep an effective staff, we can't provide any services to our community. Our staff is simply everything. If you look at these numbers, it shows you that regionally, and this really has just happened, it's not been five years, it's been the last 90 days, really the last 75 days. Suddenly, we started seeing a lot of local governments increasing their pay rates to compete with private business that was raising their pay rates. And it's had a domino effect. We believe it really started probably up in Wake County, where their annual budget is quite a bit higher than ours. But it's trickled down and now we have New Hanover County, they have a much more substantial pay plan than we have, they've increased every step of that, they've given a 12% raise for first responders and a minimum of 8.6 for other employees. If you go down the list, you just see, all around us, we're having counties and cities raise their prices. This doesn't even include, of course, private businesses, but we don't really ever expect that we'll be able to compete with private business. People who work for Onslow County Government work here because they care about serving the public. We have had, though, recruitment challenges and pay issues that are beginning to cause a real problem. Our turnover for this fiscal year right now is tracking at 23.4%. That is absolutely unacceptable. That can't continue. We are doing everything we can as a management team and as department heads and supervisors to do all of the things that don't cost money, that help keep people as part of the team. But when it comes right down to it, our challenge is we can't hire people in for our vacancies at a pay rate they can get at other places or else we upset all the people who have stuck with us through thick and thin, who actually make less than the market rate right now. Our turnover was actually highest in both April and May in social services. They experienced a 21% turnover rate in April and 24% in May. Our second highest turnover is at the Sheriff's Office, another difficult line of work. 17.8% turnover in April, 15.75% in May. Next is emergency services. 13% in April, 14% in May. And finally, our Health Department. They've had almost 10% turnover for both months. Turnover is not only difficult for employees who are left behind, who have to fill in the schedule and work overtime, it also costs a significant amount of money. In addition to paying overtime, we have to have the costs of recruiting and retraining over and over again. It disrupts our service quality to our citizens. It is very important that we It is very important that we do everything we can to take care of our staff. Of course, in addressing these challenges and in addressing all of our challenges for a growing community, we also are committed to living within our means. We will remain financially conservative, and we will make sure that we're not overburdening our taxpayers or creating a more significant problem down the road. This is the proposed budget for several other counties that are about the same size as Onslow County. If you look at this, Gaston County, we often compare ourselves with Gaston on other indicators. Their budget this year is $361 million. At the bottom, you'll see Onslow County. This proposed budget has a lot of growth in it, but it's still $284 million. Cabarrus County is about the same size as us. $318 million is their budget. Johnston County, $301 million. Catawba County, $306 million with only 156,000 citizens. And then, of course, New Hanover and Buncombe have very large salaries. Some of the counties that the paramedics have been telling you about, who have raised their prices a lot, who have raised their pay rate, they have budgets that greatly exceed what Onslow County has. We want to do everything we can for our employees, but we have to be realistic, and we have to be financially stable and make good, well-reasoned, long-term decisions. It's important that we address turnover. But we have to live within our means. The fact that we don't have an unlimited amount of money to deal with means that we have to carefully weigh many priorities. And if you look at some of the major expenses that this budget that I'm presenting today includes, it helps explain where some of that $284 million go. These are major categories. Keep in mind that 80% of our general fund is linked to mandated services, things we must do by North Carolina statute. One of those that is important to all of us is the education of our kids and preparing them to be successful in this economy. This year, we are spending $97 million on education. Most of that is going to Onslow County schools. Some of that is going to Coastal Carolina Community College. We also have $64 million going to public safety for training, for equipment, for vehicle replacement, for new positions to try to do a better job of keeping Onslow County residents safe. Keep in mind, when you see that big number, too. Everybody's hurting at the gas pump, but we use 30,000 gallons of gasoline a month taking care of our Onslow County residents. That's expensive right now. Human Services is $48 million. 9% of that is actually a pass-through of state funds. We do get some state funding for that. General Government is $40 million. This includes increases in all of our insurance for our employee health benefits, for our property and liability insurance. The fact that there are more cyber attacks has made our insurance go up for the county. It also includes a state retirement increase and other increases that are out of our control. Cultural and Recreation, these are not mandated services, but they're things that really matter to Onslow County citizens. Our libraries, our museum, and our parks, parks and recreation. In addition to addressing these challenges with this year's budget, we've also remained financially strong. I'm pleased to say that our fund balance is healthy. Our fund balance is currently 35% of our general fund budget. Our unassigned fund balance is 20% of the amount of our budgeted expenses. But part of this includes our Disaster Contingency Fund. And with us having a coastal county, I don't really consider that to be unassigned, truly. We've been asked before, why do we have to have this much of a fund balance? The Local Government Commission requires that we have 8% of our general fund budgeted expenses to be safe, and our unassigned fund balance is 20%. Why do we do that? Because we have a duty to be prepared for when a hurricane strikes again. We have a duty to be prepared for pandemics, so we can set up vaccination clinics on a dime. During Florence, we learned a lot of lessons. We had $5 million in disaster contingency money put away, and just the debris contract to pick up trash costs us more than $9 million. We have to front all the costs of dealing with a hurricane and then wait three years for FEMA to reimburse us on part of it. We still, today, have not gotten all of our reimbursement from Florence. So that is why we have to stay stable with a fund balance. Another reason we keep a healthy fund balance is it saves us money. The interest rates we're able to get when we build schools or when we go in and we buy a fire truck are completely different because of our fund balance. We're able to save the public a significant amount of money. We've continued a trend of being physically responsible with the support of this board, and we are committed to continuing a strong, stable financial condition. The budget decisions we've had to make have to be well-balanced and carefully consider what we need right this minute and what we need in the long term. This board provided direct guidance during our workshops, and we've worked hard to prepare this budget in line with your goals. I'm now going to talk about how we're going to face some of these challenges and make your goals come to life. The first goal that we're going to talk about is safety. This Board of Commissioners established a goal for this budget year to invest in the safety of Onslow County residents by providing the necessary resources to support public health, public safety, and the general welfare of the community. As part of this budget, we do have new EMS positions and two new ambulances in the budget. If supply chains permit, we are hoping to put more ambulance crews on the road to provide better service to our citizens. Honestly, even if we had 30 ambulances on the road, though, we would still have days that it would take longer to get to less emergent calls. We can't anticipate at what time of day more people will have heart attacks or what type of mass casualty events may occur. But we can do a better job, and we work every day to do a better job. We also have three new deputy positions that are included in this year's budget and new investigative sergeant position. We continue to have a significant drug issue in Onslow County, and our investigative sergeants are working around the clock, trying to keep us all safe and trying to whittle away at a problem that impacts every aspect of our society. In public health, we're investing money in training and equipment. And by reclassifying some positions that we didn't feel we were getting effectiveness from, we have a public health educator that will be coming on board to help further educate the public on those things that can cause harm in the county and diseases that can spread. Our second goal is about economic development. The Board of Commissioners asked us to look for a plan that would establish a vision, strategy, funding mechanism, and desired outcomes and expectations for the development of Burton Park and other county-owned properties. A tough economy highlights the fact that Onslow County Government wants to set up an environment that will encourage businesses to come in, to develop private job development. We've made some great strides in economic development. We sold the Shell Building in the last year. And then, in April, this board approved a new medical, retail, and restaurant development that will be built by a developer who bought some land in Burton Park. We are continuing funding for JOED, which is working across the county to increase economic development. And we hope to continue to work closely with developers, realtors, and investors to establish a strong strategy to bring more jobs, opportunity, and economic growth to Burton Park and to all of Onslow County. Another very important goal of this board in the current budget is education. We enhance the quality of life for Onslow County residents when we invest in quality educational facilities, recreational opportunities, and cultural resources. Our educational funding is up 15.47%. Our Onslow County Schools have 27,041 students this year. And they increase by about 300 students each year, although this year, they had more than 800 new students come in. We go by our school board funding formula, and you'll see our current expense is 62.9 that will go to Onslow County Schools and 4.2 million for capital outlay. This does not include our debt service payments on the schools that we've built. As you know, under state law, we are mandated to build schools. That is our job. We have, right now, 17.2 million in mortgage payments, basically, on those schools that we've built. But the elementary school kids keep coming. We also fund the Community College. 4.3 in current expense and 1.86 in capital outlay. As part of our education spending, we have another bucket of money that is very, very important for building schools. In order for us to satisfy the mandate that we have to provide schools that are needed by our Onslow County School System, we have a debt capacity model set up just for the schools. This is money that's set aside so that we can borrow to build these schools, and we can pay them off after we build them. In this budget, we are recommending that we dedicate an additional 3 cent of our tax revenue to the K-12 school capital needs. The reason we're asking for this is because in looking at the school debt capacity, we would be running out of money in the next few years by making the payments on schools that are needed. We would have to have a tax increase in a couple of years. We want to avoid that by making a smart choice now and planning for the future. So instead of having a bigger tax increase later, we want to fully dedicate and set aside 3 cent of our tax revenue, property tax revenue, for our school capital needs. In addition to education, this board has recognized the problem I talked about earlier. We have had a significant issue growing with our fire service in Onslow County. The board asked us to pursue a dedicated funding source for volunteer fire departments. As I mentioned earlier, 20 fire departments are funded in Onslow County Government. We propose this year that some of those challenges I discussed earlier be addressed by dedicating another 3 cent of tax revenue into a fire fund. This would be money put aside specifically for the fire service. It would help us to encourage volunteerism by creating some incentive plans. It would provide funding to augment our volunteer gaps with additional paid staffing. It would help us to begin to pay off a $4.6 million debt that our volunteer fire departments are carrying right now and develop a capital fund, kind of like we have for our school system, a debt capacity model for stations and fire apparatus that would allow for savings and also better interest rates when it comes time to borrow money for fire trucks. This is not just for the county. This proposed 3 cent that would be dedicated to a fire fund would also help our municipal partners. We all work together in fire management in the county. For example, North Toppsil Beach would receive about $465,000 a year to put towards their fire service. Holly Ridge would receive $211,000. Jacksonville would get $1.32 million of this three-penny dedicated fund. And it goes on for each of our municipalities. Our next budget goal is an important one as well, our workforce. The board asked me to make sure that this budget would maintain a quality workforce to recruit and hire top talent by ensuring we advertise recruitment efforts and support employees in their professional development. As you've already heard today, one of the issues we're having is the rapid growth of inflation and changes in the job market. We did look at every position. We reclassified positions that were no longer effective. We have enhanced recruitment efforts, and we are trying things we've never tried before in trying to bring in quality candidates. When we first started this conversation during our budget workshops, based on the way inflation and the job market were at the time, we talked about a 4% cost-of-living adjustment, but doing more for detention officers because we were having significant issues filling those positions. As we've moved through just the last three or four months, we have seen a rapid increase in problems related to our job market. We've seen inflation continue to climb. Our food prices are now up over last year by 10.8%. Gas prices are up 43%. We have employees who are having trouble buying gas so they can get to work. At this point, I know it sounds like a completely unprecedented request, because it is. But I would like to ask, not for just a 4% cost-of-living adjustment, but for an additional market adjustment of 4% to 6%. I'd like to ask for a 10% raise across the board for all employees. In addition, even after a 10% raise, we'll have between 23 and 28 employees, depending on changes in our staffing, who still make less than $15 an hour. This budget includes already a modest amount of money to adjust their pay so that they can make a minimum of $15 an hour. You heard a little while ago, a group of employees from EMS talk about the dramatic changes across the state in EMS pay. The reality is that we do have a pricing war right now with paramedics and EMTs. But we're doing everything we can to address that. It's important to step back and look through the fatigue and see the big picture. And I wanted to show you a view of the big picture today to help explain that it's not just our paramedics and EMTs that are involved. It's really a whole team effort. We've heard so much about ambulance response this morning and recently. And we greatly appreciate and value all of our paramedics and our EMTs. It's very difficult work, and it's tiring work. Their call volume has gone up. And they have had more people resign in the last three months. And they're tired. But in addition to having EMS, you also have other folks involved. When somebody calls 911, there's a telecommunicator who answers. And they're there from the get-go, and they're talking people through that call. And they're with them the whole time. Our telecommunicators sit in a darkened room in front of a screen. Our telecommunicators sit in a darkened room in front of a screen for 12-hour shifts, and they do some amazing work. We also have a vehicle maintenance department that works very closely with EMS to keep ambulances on the road. We have one of the best vehicle maintenance crews in the state of North Carolina. Our vehicle maintenance is so good, Camp Lejeune has contracted with us, and we now take care of their heavy vehicles. Our vehicle maintenance department scours the country for parts, and they get ambulances rolling as quickly as they can. They make sure that the equipment is in place. Also, keep in mind, when you call 911, law enforcement agencies have already been called. They're already on the scene, often doing lifesaving maneuvers before EMS even arrives, often securing the scene so that our paramedics and EMTs don't get injured. Fire services is often the first one on the scene. They're there, sometimes volunteers are there, taking care of extracting folks from vehicles, trying to do everything they can to save lives. Our human resources team doesn't get a lot of recognition, but they have worked diligently this year. We have one HR specialist named Jill who spends every waking hour trying to hire EMTs and paramedics and trying to counsel those who think they want to move on to see if we can get them to stay. Our finance department is very important in this ambulance response, too. They work hard to pay our bills. They also work hard to make sure we get our paychecks. Our finance team, our payroll, and our accountant didn't get Memorial Day off. They were here because it was a payroll Monday, so they worked all day to make sure everybody else could pay their rent or their house payment. Our purchasing department is extraordinary and recently did an RFP for a joint CAD system with Jacksonville so that we can have a safer response when it comes to all of emergency services. They also purchase medication and everything else that is needed on that ambulance. Our warehouse pulls all of our medical supplies when they're needed. GIS prepares all of the grids so that when telecommunications is given instructions, our first responders know exactly where they're going. ITS is absolutely vital. The communications aspect of emergency response simply can't be over-exaggerated. And even facilities maintenance, we have housekeepers who keep our work environment sanitized, and they work really hard, and they're part of the equation, too. As you can see, we have departments that are hurting, but the reality is, as a team, we work pretty well together, and it takes the whole team. I do ask you to consider giving all of our employees a bump in pay. While I'm talking about ambulance response, I have to also take this opportunity to explain to the public that over the last three months, as we've dealt with the hiring wars with EMS, we have had some calls that have taken longer than we like. Our overall response time for the most priority calls, the ones that are really the most life-threatening, Echo, Delta, and Charlie calls, our average response time is 13 minutes, 10 seconds. That's not fast enough. We're working to make that faster, but it's not as bad as what you've heard. The calls that are put in queue are not life-threatening most of the time, and what we're doing is sending ambulances to the higher priority calls as quickly as we can. Keep in mind, too, that we have a backup plan in place. Camp Lejeune, Pender County, and other counties do fill in for us by design when we don't have enough ambulances on the road. We are committed to taking care of our citizens. Our final budget goal is property tax. You've heard about challenges and needs, but the truth is, all of our citizens are also experiencing the record inflation and the economic downturn. We have to weigh the impact to our citizens and strike a balance when we look at our property tax rate. As you know, this year was a revaluation year. Many of our homes that we live in here in Onslow County went up in value. We're happy that they're increasing in value and not decreasing, but it does make property tax go up a little bit. One of the goals the board set was do not raise the property tax rate. Our current tax rate is 70.5 cent per $100 evaluation. If we went completely revenue neutral, it would be 55.85 per $100 evaluation. What we recommend today, based on the situation we're in and the short and long-term needs, is to reduce the tax rate by 5 cent to 65.5 cent per $100. Let's look at an example. If you own a home that was revalued at $200,000 this year, if you were paying the 70.5 cent current tax rate, your property tax would be $1410 a year. If we lower it to 65.5, you will pay $1310 a year in property tax. If your house before revow was valued at $175,000, that means your taxes, your property taxes, will go up $6.33 a month. Of that amount, you might be wondering how much we're talking about putting away for the fire fund or putting away for the schools. That 3 cent that we're talking about dedicating to fire service adds up to $60 a year for that person in that $200,000 house. So of that $1310 they pay a year, $60 of that $1310 would go to the fire fund. Another $60 of that $1310 would go to the schools. What do citizens get out of this? Well, here's one thing they get out of it. It's ISO ratings, insurance service office. Our ISO ratings show how ready we are as a community to fight fires. A home that's less likely to be completely destroyed will be less expensive to insure. So if your ISO rating went from a good rating of 6 to a bad rating of 10, your homeowner's insurance on a $200,000 house actually goes up by $1,400, $1,441. So for that $60 a year investment, it helps ensure that your ISO rating is not getting worse, and you're not having that dramatic increase in homeowner's insurance. This recently happened in reverse in real life. The Idanisi family reached out by email to thank the commissioners. Their ISO rating went from a 10 down to a 4 because Turkey Creek Fire Department entered into a contract to cover their street, and before Turkey Creek got involved, their homeowner's insurance was $2,300 a year. After their ISO went from 10 to 4, their homeowner's insurance went down to $954. So that's how dramatic it is. Another important component that citizens get from this, of course, is building schools. Currently, our per pupil current expense budget is $2,030. That means every child that lives in that house, the county is paying $2,030 just in current expense to Onslow County Schools. And on top of that, we're building these new schools that are needed about every three years. If you don't have children in the schools and you're wondering if you get anything else out of your tax dollars, I would assure you that if you go to any restaurants, environmental health has inspected those. They've also inspected all the daycares, the tattoo parlors. Our health department is busy giving vaccinations. Our DSS department is ensuring that children, disabled adults, are not being neglected and mistreated. Our environmental services is making sure that this $200,000 house is not being flooded out unnecessarily because of beaver dams. They're clearing streams and even spraying for mosquitoes. So really, we hope that all of our citizens will appreciate what they get for these important tax dollars. In summary, our fiscal year 2223 proposed budget decreases our tax rate by five pennies. It dedicates three pennies of the remaining tax revenue into a fire service fund to take care of our future needs, three pennies to K-12 school capital needs, and we believe it follows the guidance of the goals set by this Board of Commissioners. I would like to thank the budget team. It's been a challenging year. Our department heads, our finance department, tax office, IT, our administrative governing body staff, human resources, and our entire team of employees. And I sincerely thank all of you, our Board of Commissioners, for your unwavering support and guidance. At this time, we will move to the public hearing.
Ms. Griffin, before we move to the public hearing, some of the commissioners want to take a short break.
Yes, sir.
We've been going for about an hour now, so we'll take a 10-minute break.
Glad to call a meeting back to order. We will now turn this back over to Ms. Griffin for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute, Section 159-12, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners hereby opens the public hearing on the proposed 2223 fiscal year budget. And we do ask for citizens to keep in mind the same things I said earlier. Please address your comments to the entire board. You have exactly five minutes to speak. And I will call your name in the order that you've signed up. Before I call the names that are on the sheet, I will ask our clerk to the board, Ms. Wond. Have you received any budget comments on our budget email?
No, I have not.
Thank you, Ms. Wond. Our first speaker, Mr. John Hudson of 102 Pecan Lane in Richlands.
Good morning. My name is John Hudson, 102 Pecan Lane in Richlands. I've come here today to ask you guys to do something difficult. It is difficult because the county staff, as we've heard, have worked tirelessly on this budget for the last few months to bring forth a budget that will meet the needs of our citizens. It would be very easy to vote yes, as it is currently proposed, and to give all the hard-working citizens and county employees an increase in pay which they rightly deserve. However, the board does not always have an easy job to do. As we all know, the many of you ran for election, you promised to be fiscal conservatives, and that's something we've talked about this morning. You vowed to keep taxes low and to minimize the amount of money you spend to be good stewards of the citizens' money. I've read all 577 pages of this budget, and my favorite part of the entire budget is the organizational chart. Because on the organizational chart, at the top of it, it says the Onslow County Citizens. That includes myself and everyone in this room. We citizens get to decide who serves on the board and elect commissioners who have promised to represent our interests at heart. According to the reports I've read and what I saw in the presentation today, a tax-neutral rate would be an increase, with increased property assessments, would be right around 55 cents per $100. However, the new proposed rate is 10 cents more than tax-neutral, which means that ultimately the citizens will pay more in property taxes even with the decreased tax rate. Some of the increased rate is mandated by the state. We talked about that with the school constructions, that's three cents. Some of it is a fire tax, which is another three cents, which is vital to our community because, as we talked about with insurance rates and the current status of the volunteer fire departments, we need to have those at a high level. However, the fire tax, as I've heard before, there were supposed to be many meetings that we had in the communities to discuss the needs of the communities in those. And I heard many of you speak about including the fire tax on a budget, on the ballot. And so the concerned, excuse me, the concern I have with the fire tax is that we have not met those expectations and we have just put it into the budget. Another is with the increase in pay that's equal eight percent across the board. These hard-working county employees deserve a raise. The EMS deserves a raise. A vast majority of our employees deserve a raise. However, there are specific people in the county government who make up to four to five times what the average household income is for the entire county. And so I am proposing to you that we set a cap, and I don't know that specific amount, but proposing a cap of certain individuals making above a certain amount, not receiving as much of an increase to try to minimize the amount that we're adding to the budget. Many, and let's start, sorry. So when you take out one section of the county budget I looked at, is the administration. And I have been told that the administration does an outstanding job. Everyone I've ever spoke to has said that they would do a great, a great job. However, last year, there was an increase for those seven people of about average 14,000 per person. Now, that's not going to be equal because it's based on percentages, but in the current one, it's just proposed just under 10,000 per person. So in the past two years, on average, those seven people would have an increase of just under 24,000 per person. I believe that if the county citizens knew that they're increasing all the property taxes around 18%, or going to people who are making four to five times the amount of the average household income, they would be against that. I do not have specific answers to what to trim out of this budget. I do not have the magic wand that I can wave over and tell you how it was that you guys can come in under budget to not increase property taxes. With the increase in inflation, impacts of COVID, skyrocketing home and gas prices, I do not believe we should also increase the property taxes of our citizens to add to where they're already maxed out. I'm asking for you to send the budget back with the expectations of exactly how much it is to get us as close to tax-neutral as possible. Our citizens do not have the luxury of increasing their budget on a monthly basis because they are at fixed incomes. They're making what they can make. Only government can increase the amount of money they bring in in order to meet what they find to be budget needs. I don't think we, in a budget, current budget, we cannot increase all that we want to increase. I spoke to you about making tough decisions, and I'm asking you to make one now. When you ran for election, many of you promised to be fiscally conservative, and the citizens who voted for you trusted that you would be in the name of your word. When they voted for you, you told them that if a budget came to you that would increase their taxes, you would vote no. This is your opportunity to prove them right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Our next speaker is Mr. Rick Grant.
As I say the rest of the story, I wanted to thank the chairman and the commissioners and the county manager and her staff for letting me speak. I would submit that while you provided some rate relief and was prudent, you're not mortgaging the future. I think everybody here, and I'll get to my comments and try to keep it under five minutes because I'll get cut off. The reality is, we are facing an inflationary area. We just said, the Fed just came out and said they could be raising interest rates by 100 basis points, 1%. If you really believe that you're not going to have to raise taxes in the future by cutting things right now, I think you're dreaming. And I think that the county manager made a very, very good argument as to what's going on. That includes the 80% that's out of your control. When we first had a discussion, I think with the chairman, you were talking about a couple hundred million dollars in schools over the next four or five years, which is now 250. If you think you're going to borrow at 3% or 4%, I mean, the easy math on this is $50 million school at 10% borrowing is $5 million bucks a year. A $50 million school at 3%, okay, is 1.5 million. We're not going to have the money, if you don't do the planning and put the money away now for those type of things, all you're doing is kicking this down the road, okay? And you're going to make problems down the road that are really going to hurt, I think, everybody else. And before I run out of comments, I'd go through a couple of things. I think the funding requirements I just talked about with the schools, I think you made the case for this year, but I think it's more serious down the road, and if you don't do those things now. Borrowing the higher cost, less can be done, it's really simple math. If you start borrowing at 10%, you're not going to be able to do as much as you borrow at 3%. And something that she pointed out, which we face as a town, is an interesting thing. FEMA does not pay for things upfront, okay? You get, FEMA reimburses you, which means the county or the towns are out that money, sometimes for years. And carrying costs and those type of things, it's not going to be 1% or 2% when we're going in this inflationary time. Providing more upfront capital requires less debt, that's simple math. If you don't do that thing, if you, you know, higher down payment on my house means I'm going to make lower house payments. You've got to face this issue now. You can't kick it down the road. I understand it's a difficult time. We've got high inflation, gas prices at all-time highs. You know, I fixate on diesel prices because, as everybody knows, what is it, 70% of things delivered in this country are by train or truck, and it's diesel fuel. I'm very pleased with the decisions you're making regarding the three cents. I think that's very smart. North Topsail now has dedicated some money towards a capital fund, and I think by doing that, what you're doing is you're saying, we're going to take care of two things that are going to be major problems for us going down the road. I like the fact that you can do a partnership, as she's talked about, with the local communities and saying, we've got to replace that. I think our newest fire truck in North Topsail Beach is 2008, and so we're facing a lot of the same problems. The fire fund, the school fund, I think are great. Providing the local communities the ability to participate in those things is great. And I think that if you take the path of saying, we're going to drop the property tax rate now and hope that down the road, because, you know, the promise was, is also to be fiscally responsible, and I think kicking this down the road in high inflation and high interest rates is going to be a major bad decision on your part. I really compliment the work that you did putting this together. I didn't read the whole 500-something pages of the proposed budget, but I think what you've done is done a balanced approach to this thing. I think you've recognized the inflation that we're going through. I think that interest rates are going to get worse, not better. And so the more that we can do on the front end of this thing and not kick it down the road, so again, I compliment the work that you did on the budget, county manager, and the work that you've done as a board, and I hope that you agree to, you know, to go down this path because, you know, in the future, who knows? But I'm old enough to remember the Jimmy Carter days, and I don't think we want to be borrowing at 15, 16%. Because if we're doing that, we're not going to be able to build the schools, we're not going to be able to take care of the fire departments, or to give people salaries. That's all I had. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Byrd.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm Steve Byrd at 605 Hurington Way. I'm a retired Navy chaplain. I'm also a retired prison chaplain, and also I am the EMS chaplain for the last year. And I had the opportunity to be able to go and be able to talk to all our EMS, and being able to go out at least four times a month to be able to hear their concerns, to be able to see what's going on with them. And from that, we were able to develop a climate survey, which I have in my hand here, which is 13 questions, which we gave to all 69 employees who filled in on out. And of this, the big, three things that came out of this survey were staffing, pay, and morale. So the staffing and the things, as we've all heard in regard to the staffing, that we need the staffing, I can give you a good example in regard to the staffing. When my wife fell and dislocated her shoulder on February 4th, it took 21 minutes from the time that she called to the time that it was responded to be able to get to her. And who came? It was the FEMA folks from Texas that came to be able to take care of her. Why? Because we were short-staffed. And so we need to be able to look at the staffing. We know that if we don't have the staff, we're not going to be able to get the response. I heard in regard to, if we had even 30 trucks, we couldn't get to everyone. But the fact of the matter is, three trucks is better than having five trucks or four trucks at a time. When I talk to, you know, the chef commanders in regard to, how many trucks do you have lined today? Well, chaplain, we have five trucks, five out of 11. That's 45%. We go down to four, that's less than 36% on being able to take care of this great county in regard to the public safety and the needs of our citizens. And so being able to look at that, you know, we need to be able to look at also in regard to the pay. You know, we look at the four, you know, the 4% and the cost of living. We also see in regard to an extra four, and county manager appreciate that with an extra 10%. But we also need, we also know that all positions here in Onslow County are important, but not all positions are equal. Being able to see our paramedics and medics on being able to go over to the truck rollover in regard to Marines being killed, in regard to going to an infant who is, quote, "fallen off the couch," end quote, who has many, many bruises, and being able to endure, you know, the traumatic, you know, traumatic incidences which they go each and every time puts a strain, you know, on them emotionally. They are doing the public safety and being able to take care of us. They are, they're, they're the first responders to be able to do what needs to be done. Therefore, they need to be compensated in regard to what they have been experiencing and being able to go through. And I even had one comment here in regard to, this is one staff stated, "Staff appears exhausted, running short sucks with an increase in call volume, which puts stress on our providers, and this caused mission readiness to suffer." When I was there in Hoylock, Scotland, our big board says, "Mission first, people always. If we do not take care of the people, then mission will not be accomplished." We see in regard to the pay as well, that here, as we look at possibly another 10%. Being able to look at that to be able to take care of our paramedics and medics. Even as April 2022, we see that inflation rate was 8.26%. We need to be able to match that inflation rate. Even though you had the budget meeting back in February, still, you know, you did not account in regard to the inflation rate, which you did not foresee. But we need to be visionary in being able to look forward on what we need to be able to do. Even with detention, you know, detention officers, being, you know, being a retired state prison chaplain, yeah, I saw the correctional officers, what they had to go through. Being able to see five of our correctional officers being stabbed brutally and being able to see that mess. Yes, they have a tough job. 2% and even myself, that is still too low even pay for detention officers. So we be able to look at each and every one of these, and here I want to leave with you a quote from General George Patton. "There is a great deal of talk about loyalty from the bottom to the top. Loyalty from the top down is even more necessary and much less prevalent. Mission first, people always." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Ricky Hardison.
Ricky Hardison, 346 Turkey Point Road. Good afternoon, I think it is now, Commissioners and County Manager. On behalf of the Onslow County Fire Service, we would like to thank you for listening. I can agree with what Ms. Griffin has said. There was a lot of time and effort put in to see in the problem. There's no easy answers. As comfortable as those chairs look this morning up there that y'all sitting in, they're not very comfortable. I understand. Tough decisions are having to be made, but we thank you for looking and planning. As everyone said, we have to move forward. We've played behind the eight ball long enough. If we don't start planning, we're going to get in a position we can't get out of. So we thank you for supporting the fire service, looking at our needs, and addressing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hardison. That is the last speaker signed up for the public hearing, but I will make one call to the audience if anyone would like to approach to discuss specifically the budget. I believe Ms. Clark, you wanted to come forward?
I'm Kiva Clark. I live in Jacksonville, and I have been living in Jacksonville for the last 60 years. So I know the, mostly the inside and the outside. And I know when water bill is $13 and now $77 a month. So that mean, I know that things change over the years. But my main point was a question, and I've asked several of the Commissioners about this. Living in the city of Jacksonville, we pay a tax. And then if we go, I guess, on Gum Branch Road, we pay another tax. And I don't think it's fair that we should be paying two taxes, the city tax and the Onslow County tax. County tax. I haven't gotten any answer that I can agree with, but that's not strange, about paying these 2 taxes. I don't mind paying taxes, but I don't want, I want it to be a fair tax. I don't mind paying taxes for the school, because someone paid taxes for me to go to school. So that's no problem. But when it comes to adding things to, I know you have nothing to do with the city, adding things to the budget, so that you have to pay those things to keep whatever you're getting going. You got to, you got to drink water, you got to go on Gum Branch Road, you got to go on, I guess, when we get out from this point, going to rich, rich land this way, I guess that's why we're paying county tax. But the county people use our city streets just as much as we use their county roads. So this is what I'm trying to get straight. Why is it that we pay double taxes? And maybe after you get together and think about it, you can talk about it and find some kind of resolution on this. If we're paying just as much for the county tax as the county people, then maybe the county people should be paying a little something on the city taxes. And that's my biggest concern. And, and also, with job opportunities in the county, we find that our children, I'm a mother and a grandmother, our children go to school here in the county, they went off to college, and each one of them are working in other states. Because I don't care what college they went to, West of Salem, whatever, they had to go to other states to get a decent paying job. And we get, if you want to sleep or eat in Onslow County, you can do that. Because you have to go to a fast food, because you can't afford to go in a place else with the salaries that are paid in Onslow County. So I look at, I want you to look at the fairness in all categories, all categories. And some of the Commissioners have said, we are nearest as the telephone. But I guess the telephone must be in Russia to some of them, because you never get a response. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Would anyone else like to come to the podium to speak on the matter of the budget?
Yes, I'm Mike Morgan, 113 Harold Avenue in Swansboro. Really have a question for you, Sharon. The bottom line number for the budget, you showed a comparison of our county versus similar counties, and we are from a bit less to substantially less than some of these other similar counties. Is that because the average household income in this county is much less? Or was that bottom line number just dictated because we need to fund what we need to have?
It's because our taxable property, our actual taxable property, that's not on federal land, is 45th out of 100 in the state, and our tax rate is low, believe it or not, compared to the rest of the state. So even though our population this year is 13th in the state, we're 89th in the tax levy per person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see, we have one more person approaching. Please state your name and address.
Good afternoon again. Kyle Monax, 310 Creon Court. So I wanted to address a couple of things I heard in the budget. So one was on what we're paying for vaccinations. I know we're paying people to do vaccinations. I'm trying to figure out why we're paying people to do vaccinations when EMS can do vaccinations. So why are we bringing other people to do it instead of going ahead and paying EMS to do it? That is one of our abilities in, as a paramedic or an advanced EMT. Another thing that I heard is, my, my father was a sheriff for 35 years, so I have nothing against the police department, sheriff's department, anything like that. But you said usually they're first on the scene, yes, their cars are quicker, they have Dodge Challengers, while we've got this big truck that we gotta tote around. So they usually are on scene first. Now, when I look it up on the county website, they're making anywhere between $43,000 and $56,000 a year, where the average paramedic at about 5 years is making $40,560. So that was one of the, one of the things I had a question about. And I kept hearing something about building schools. Now, I'm not sure, because I, I haven't looked into this, but we have 19 elementary schools in Jacksonville and 8 high schools in Jacksonville. I'm just trying to figure out what schools we're building in this county. So those were a couple of questions that I had, but I will leave it at that, and I do appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else approach, oh, we've got one more.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Ms. Sharon, and thank you for everybody coming out today. But my name's Mike Kaylee, I live at 124 Imperial Lane. I just want to say that I do understand the work that everybody put in on the budget. I do know it's 570 some pages, I've been through some of it, not enough of it. But it is a hard decision to sit there and make the decisions for the county overall. Kudos to everybody that was involved in this budget. But as I stand up here today, I'm asking to you to be transparent and due diligence about how you spend the, the money for the, the, the tax money from the citizens, okay? We do need to take care of our first responders. We do need to take care of all of our county employees. We need to make these county employees know that they're in a family environment, you know, treat them like family to the best you can, helps keep some of that retention, all right? I gave Mr. Royce Bennett, Commissioner, kudos for being on the back of the ambulance the other week, getting out there and seeing what the first responders do, okay? We need to be more involved in what we go and what takes place in our county, all right? That, that's one of my biggest pet peeves. We got to quit putting the Band-Aid on things, and we need to fix the stuff right, especially when it comes to the paramedics and the fire departments, volunteer or paid. And they're the ones that come out when we, we need them in that split second. Just to add on one thing, that one call, that might be a minor call, that might be a broken leg, and you, and you think you might be able to take that heart attack or a stroke or something else that is more evident, to put that on top of the list. But that broken leg could be just as important as that stroke or that heart attack, because if that femur artery's blocked off, that blood's not circulating. Or if it, or if the femur artery got cut, they're bleeding out. Don't just think, when that call comes in through the 911 center, that it's exactly what it is. I know years ago, when I was an EMT in Indiana, it came in as a cardiac. When we got there almost on scene, it ended up being a fire with 3 burn victims. So you don't always know what that information's going to be. So we got to take a look at, and quit putting Band-Aid on things, and watch how we spend our money so it can go farther. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaylee. And with that, I will close the public hearing for the proposed 2223 fiscal year budget. And at this time, the budget is open for County Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget as presented, providing a 10% overall wage increase for all Onslow County government employees and make the lowest employee wage $15 an hour. Authorize the chairman to sign the budget ordinance and all necessary documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We will now go into discussion, and I'd open the floor up for discussion. I'll start with, anybody?
You gonna start with me?
Commissioner Bennett.
I appreciate everybody's comments, it's, it's, it's difficult to, to make a budget like this, there, there are a lot of challenges in Onslow County. I would say, you know, as far as being physically conservative, I think that the, the comparison between our budget and those of other counties that are similar sized to ours indicates that we are physically conservative. I, I believe that being physically conservative means meeting your financial and legal obligations, and that's part of what this budget does, it meets our current and future legal and financial obligations. I think it, it is prudent to put away money for the future. I think, Mr. Grant, I agree with him 100%, these interest rates are going to continue to go up. If we don't plan for the future now, then you're going to see your taxes go up a whole lot more over the next few years. These are just things that we, we have to do. I would love to see the tax rate go down more, but I don't think it's a viable option for Onslow County. Ms. Keever, I just would, would relay to you, when my parents moved here several years ago, I encouraged them to move into the city limits, I live in the city limits, I pay those double taxes also. And when my father, when I thought my father was having a heart attack, and I moved, and I called 911, because we were in the city, there was a police officer there within 2 minutes with an external device to, to start his heart if that had been needed, thank the Lord it wasn't needed. Within about 4 minutes, the fire department was there with a fire truck and EMTs on board to, to help him, and it did take the ambulance, probably 5 or 6 minutes to get there. But because he was in the city, he had to help immediately, almost, and, and I was, I was glad that, that we were there. That's why we pay more taxes in the city, the police officers are there. There's just no way that Onslow County is going to be able to get ambulances over 767 square miles of territory. I think the city is about 26 square miles comparatively. So there's just no way that we're going to be able to provide enough emergency medical services to, to have an ambulance anywhere in Onslow County within 6 minutes, which of course would be ideal. But I do believe we need to, we need to pay our emergency medical people, as is stated, I rode with them just a few weeks ago, they're very hard workers, they're, they're, they're very busy, it's a stressful job, and we need to do the best we can to, to get them as much pay as we can. But I think that's about all I have to say about this budget, I think it's, it's, it's the best we can do with what we have, and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to meet the current and future needs for Onslow County with this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move on this side with Commissioner Knapp, and then we'll move down the line.
Well, let me just, I want to say a few things about the budget, and about the process, and about what I heard today, and I just want you to bear with me. I hear a lot of talk about the budget, budget's been going ongoing since December of last year. To think that the Commissioners just kind of, just blew it off, and we don't really pay attention, we paid attention at every workshop. Now, I've heard some of the speakers say that, you know, you ran on a platform never to raise taxes, and I'm one of those Commissioners, okay? And I won't raise taxes. Unfortunately, we live in unprecedented times, and I'm not for a tax increase. If you go back and look at history, in 2021, the interest rate or the inflation rate was 7.0%, okay? In April, or excuse me, in March of this year was 8.5%. For April, it's 8.3%, and the new index is coming out this week. And I'd be very surprised to see what that means, or what that results in. But these are unprecedented times, because if you go back to 2020, it was 1.4%. Now, you can do the logic there and figure out what caused that, by what administration is in or whatnot. Just throwing that out there. But you go from 1.4% in 2020 to 8.3%, that is a dramatic, unprecedented jump in inflation. The last time we went through this inflation rate, I was a kid, and I'm, I'm almost 62 years old. So what does that tell you? So I say that by saying this. I look at our management staff and what we've done with the budget, especially the Commissioners as we analyzed everything, we agonized over this, believe it or not. We have agonized over this budget right here, which is thick. We have tried to dot our i's and cross our t's, as some people would say. So what did we do? We did listen to the people. I hear some of you saying, the EMS does this, and EMS does that, however, EMS, blah, blah, they deserve this, however. Anytime I hear a however, there's another point to that, EMS deserve everything that we can give them. They work diligently, they work around the clock, they need our support, and so do our county employees. But what I didn't also hear, though, just very briefly touched on it, is our correction officers. I have personally sat down with our correction officers, several of them, who came to me, talking to me privately as friends about how hard it is in the corrections office, they need a pay raise, they work hours, et cetera, et cetera, and they're right. So as we talked with Sharon, our county manager, and with the other Commissioners, we decided to make it fair across the board. Our county deserves, our county people deserve a pay raise, especially EMS, especially our corrections officers. It is easier to maintain people and give them a pay bump than to try to hire and train new people that come on board. That's a more expensive endeavor, and I know that, after 27 years of law enforcement, I can tell you firsthand that that's the more expensive route, if you try to retire, hire new people and train them. You need to keep the people that we have. Unfortunately, we're making decisions based on everything that's going around us, and we have to be as fair as possible. Every one of us are conservative up here, I can guarantee you some more so than others. But one thing that we are, is that we have the best interests of the county at our, at our, or the, the best interest of the county is what we prioritize our goals for. We have to maintain the schools, we have to maintain public safety, we have to keep them around, and public safety includes EMS, EMT, and everything else. We understand the call volume, okay? But right now, we, like I said before, and I think you said it first, Sharon, we live in unprecedented times right now. You know, I don't know about you, but the gas prices are killing me. I've got to put premium unleaded in my car, I'm paying almost $5 a gallon. So I, I, I take as minimal trip as possible in my car. And I too live in the city. I live in Jacksonville, so I get a double whammy on my taxes, and my taxes went up $60,000 for this last assessment. Do you think I'm happy about that? Absolutely not, okay? So we're all feeling the sting of the budget. But I want to say, the process that this budget took from December to now, I applaud our county manager and the employees and the department heads who participated in this budget. We made it very clear that we weren't going to raise the tax rate. And I understand where you come from, Mr. Hudson, I've listened intently to everything you said, and I do respect your opinion and your input. But we have to take the totality of the county when we come to, in, in terms of our decision and what's fair. So what we thought was fair as County Commissioner, is to reduce the tax rate as much as possible without shooting ourselves in the foot, so that we can maintain a stable and functional budget to help us keep afloat, and that's what we're trying to do, on top of that giving our county employees a pay raise that they deserve. We understand what EMS is going through, all of us do up here, what the corrections officers are going through. But no one failed to mention DSS, they're overworked, they're underpaid, they're working just as hard, if not harder, than a lot of other positions. There's no one job that is greater than the other job. So let's get that, that myth out of the equation here, okay? Every job that we have in the county is important, no matter what you do. And so we decided, fair across the board, that every employee should get a 10% bump. I also heard something else, too, about fair market value, and I heard about certain salaries are above the mean, and certain this or whatever, about certain people in certain positions in the county. Let me defunct that right now, okay? When you're in a position of leadership in Onslow County or any other government institution, whether you work for civil service or whatnot, with your promotion, with, with your promotion comes increased pay and increased responsibility. It's just like somebody sitting there as a colonel or a general in charge of a battalion or a squadron, whatever it might be, okay? But I know personally, the hard work, the time away from home, the nights on the phone, the emails that Sharon and the rest of the staff have gone through with us as Commissioners, questioning everything about this budget. And then she has to stay within the parameters of the goals that we've established as 7 And then she has to stay within the parameters of the goals that we've established as seven commissioners. That's a difficult task. Okay? As far as I'm concerned, Sharon deserved everything that she's got coming to her in terms of what she does and the staff. If we could give more to the staff, I would be the first one to say, yes, let's do this. And we're trying to compensate for the cost of living. Apparently, we cannot keep up with the cost of living. We just can't. The cost of living is rising rapidly, as I just told you about the inflation rate. And I'm very concerned about what it's going to be this week. I think it's the third when it comes out with the consumer index. And I would love to see what it is, whether it's gone from 8.3% up to 9%. You know, and right now, there's three things that govern inflation, and we're seeing all three things. Okay? Increased labor, fuel. That's one of the biggest things right now that has increased our inflation rate, if you look around at the pumps. And the other thing that, you know, we talk about all the time, we're increasing our costs because everything runs around fuel. Everything. Put fuel in the trucks to transport our goods across country. The more the truckers have to pay for gas, the more the prices are going to go up. And we're all faced with this dilemma. But I just wanted to say that I've looked at this budget. Have I looked at every single page? No, I've looked at a majority of them, and I've discussed it with most of the commissioners on this board. And I'm very proud of what Sharon and the staff have done. And I think that we have passed, we have a budget that is sound, that's conservative fiscal. You know, we don't, we don't, we did not incorporate a fire tax. We did not incorporate a tax for the schools. We did the prudent thing that Sharon suggested, and we all agreed upon. She put three cents away for, for this particular, like you said, kicking the can down the road. We stopped kicking the can down the road. We're taking preventative measures right now as we speak. You go to other counties, their tax rate may be a few cents below us, but guess what else they have? They have a fire tax. And you know what else they have? They have a garbage disposal tax in some of these counties. So if their tax rate is 60%, you know, or 60 cents to, for $100, they're actually paying 67 or 68 because they're paying that fire tax and that garbage tax. So personally, I want to commend you, Sharon, and your staff for finding a way to do this because when I, we first told you to get us a 10% across the board, I didn't think you could get it done, and she did. And I'm very happy about that. I'm very pleased about this budget. I'm very pleased at the process of how this budget went for the last, what, five, six months? Okay? Because it's been constant, and we're constantly on the phone trying to find ways to save money. So I want to thank you, Sharon. I want to thank all the assistant county managers and department heads for participating. I want to thank for EMS for raising their concerns because we have been listening. Trust, trust me, we've been listening. We've been on the phone with each other, talking about, did you hear what this person said? What about this? What about that? And we have been discussing everything, not only from EMS, but also from corrections officers across the board, the DSS workers, you name it. So that's basically all I have to say. I'm in favor of this budget. I'm going to vote yes for this budget, and I think a 10% increase is not enough for county employees. I wish we could do more. And the first opportunity we have to be able to increase your salaries, I'm going to be the first one in line to vote for it because you work hard, you deserve it. All the first responders deserve it. And you've got a thankless job, and I appreciate what EMS has done, what they continue to do, and the corrections officers, law enforcement, et cetera. So that's basically all I have to say. Again, thank you very much for attending. Thank you for your participation. And Sharon, thank you.
Commissioner Price?
You know, we've heard a lot of different numbers here today, and I'm not a really big numbers guy, but I'd like to start out at a fundamental level. And as I looked at the financial summary, the adopted budget of 2022, we brought in $109,338,000 in taxes, property taxes. The proposed budget for 2023, we bring in $131,562,895. That's a $22 million tax increase. It's not a property tax rate increase, but it is a tax increase because revenue neutral at 55.85 would have brought us in $109,338,000, if I understand what revenue neutral is. So, you know, I just want to be, I want to be straight up with you. It is a $22 million tax increase, you know, any way you dice it. That's just what it is. Now, not saying that there aren't some areas that, I'm a realist. I realize that we cannot stay revenue neutral. I understand that. But the increase is a 9.65 in the rate over what revenue neutral is. The proposed rate is 65.5. There's three big areas that kind of we honed in on, I think, on this, was the three cents set aside for Onslow County schools for future school construction. When we had a meeting, I think it was back in February, if I remember correctly, to hear about the 10-year plan of construction, we knew in advance that the number was going to be $251 million, if I remember correctly. So that kind of, that kind of blew me back almost immediately right there. And that's a tremendous sum of money. So I went into that meeting with the ideas of what could I recommend that could save Onslow County taxpayers money down the road? And I had a couple of recommendations. Now, all of them were met with the enthusiasm of a French nobleman being carted off to the guillotine, but I did have some recommendations. No other member spoke out in favor of those recommendations, so I realized I was a lone wolf in that particular area. But Superintendent Collins did say he would consider the idea that he could look into that. But about a month ago, I called the county manager and asked her to see if they had run the numbers on one of the suggestions I had made, and she said that the superintendent said they had decided not to. So right there, I realized nothing was going to change because no Board of Ed member supported my ideas. No member of the Board of Commissioners spoke out in support of my ideas. So I realized then we were going to have to set aside three cents for Onslow County schools because that is a state mandate, and that's something we have to do. So that's one that's pretty much a lock. So I understand the three cent for Onslow County schools. We've got to do that. The area of the COLA, when we first met and talked about the COLA, I think it was back in February, the early February, at that point in time, I think Ms. Griffin recommended 4% in COLA, if I remember correctly. And at that time, I supported like a 3%, but things changed dramatically over the last, as Ms. Griffin described, the other counties have greatly accelerated their pay, and inflation's gone through the roof. Everything everybody's talked about, I don't need to repeat that. But I would support an 8% COLA because CPI is currently at 8.3%. If we do a 10% COLA, it's going to require us to reach into the fund balance if we fully employ all these positions. Is that correct, Ms. Griffin?
We will be dedicating slightly more fund balance to balancing the budget than we were planning to. However, I will caveat that to say, the past couple of years, we've only used about 95% of our budgeted amount, so we don't anticipate we'll actually have to use it. But we will be putting a placeholder on more of the fund balance. That is correct.
Okay, so I am assuming, I'm assuming we fulfill all of that, we hire everybody, and if we do, it's going to require additional fund balance. So I am correct in that regard, so if we fully implement it. I think that sets a precedent that we don't want to set as an Onslow County Board to dip into the fund balance to provide for raises. And let me just explain my rationale on that because, as many people have already said, interest rates are going up. And so I think growth is going to slow in Onslow County if interest rates go up. If inflation continues like it is, I don't see how our sales tax is going to be able to keep pace with what it's doing right now. It is, we've been blessed over the last year and a half or two. We thought during COVID, you know, sales tax would tank, but that's not what happened. So we have indeed been blessed. But what goes up must come down. So I think we're going to see a decline in sales tax and a diminished growth in Onslow County. And so these, this COLA is recurring. These are dollars that continue to go on. And always before, we said, well, growth will handle it. I'm not sure growth is going to handle everything if we boost from 8 to 10%. So I favor 8%. Had someone sent me an email that said they found 8% to be insulting. In my 29 years as a school teacher, I never received an 8% raise as much as an 8% raise my whole 29 years as a teacher. I wish someone would have insulted me like that. I wish the state legislature would say, Mr. Price, we're going to insult you. We're going to give you 8% this year, and we're going to give you 8% the next year. I would have done a backflip if I could have, but I couldn't have stuck the landing. So, you know, I know I couldn't do that. But, you know, I think that is more than fair. We can't keep pace with President Biden. He's had 48 years to prepare to ruin the economy. So, you know, that's the kind of thing where we're not going to be able to keep pace with his inflation rate. I think we have to do what's fair. I think 8% is fair. 8%. Keep in mind, it's not only 8% this year, but it was 8% last year. So we're talking about 16% over two years. That has to be significant. That's not insignificant. And, and I'm just thinking in terms of people who are, who are on a fixed income. Those people that can't increase their income by taking on a second job, or they can't get a side job and a side hustle and make more money to, to kind of meet that situation. The other three cents set aside is for volunteer fire departments. And no doubt, Ms. Griffin showed you the slide of concerns about volunteer fire department. We've had these concerns for the past six years that I've been on the board. We've talked about these every year, and we've continued along trying to go piecemeal and do what we could. And so I believe it was a little over a year, we had a commissioners' meeting, I think it was a workshop, and we agreed that our public relations guy, Mr. Glenn Hargit, and emergency services director, Norm Bryson, should conduct what we call town hall meetings at the various fire districts, Halls Run, Hubert, Southwest, Nine Mile, whatever, with the various districts to inform the public about these challenges that Onslow County Fire Service faces. And we haven't gotten it done for, I don't know what, totally what the reasons are. I know COVID definitely played into that, and, but we didn't get those, those town hall meetings done. That's on us. That's our responsibility. And I felt like the town hall meetings were a good idea at the time. I supported them because, and I still think that it's a good idea to get feedback from the public because each fire district is different. Not all fire districts are hurting from lack of volunteers. I think some are doing better than others, as I understand it, based on what I've been told. I'm not an expert, but I do rely, I do listen whenever I talk to Norm or whenever Ms. Griffin shares information with me about it. So I think we can learn from what other districts are doing, what other fire departments are doing, and employ strategies to address the recruitment problem, the unique challenges each community faces. What, what are the fundraisers they do, or whatever it may be, whatever issues come up in these talent? And just seeing that, that overhead, that PowerPoint frame where it shows you the number of fire engines we need, trucks, and all of that, it kind of hits you then. The public would have an awareness, and we need to inform the public of this. And so in my estimation, we're getting the cart before the horse. We're going with a top-down approach. We're saying, okay, we know what's best. You trust us. We'll do this. We're from the government. We're here to help. And so, you know, that type of outlook, and that doesn't feel right to me. That doesn't feel right in my gut. It feels like we're setting aside the three cents for a fire, and in reality, that's a fire tax. You can call it whatever you want to. You can call it apple pie and ice cream, but it's still a fire tax. It's a three cents set aside on the property tax. Okay? You call it a property tax set aside. I call it a fire tax. Okay? So, you know, it's without going to the people. I think something this big, three cents on the tax rate is roughly $6 million. An idea this big should be taken to the people and voted on by the people in a referendum. Okay? So, because that's what other communities do. And it may need be that we need a fire tax. It may be that we need to go that route. I don't know, but I think we should do what we said we were going to do. And to me, it feels like that we have bait and switched ourselves. We said we were going to do this. We said we're going to have the town hall meetings. We said we're going to inform the public. We're going to get feedback. Now, all of a sudden, we've got the reval. We've got this opportunity to say we're still cutting the tax rate by five cents, back to 65.5, but, you know, we're not doing what we, what we committed to do. That doesn't feel right to me. And so that's where I'm coming from on that. And one more thing about the COLA is that, is that the commissioners automatically receive the COLA. So there's a built-in incentive. We have incentivized the COLA. And of course, some commissioners will say, well, I don't, I tell, I send out an email, I don't receive the COLA. Well, if no one receives it, there's no point in having a rule where the commissioners automatically receive it. So obviously, if anybody receives the COLA, which they do automatically unless they reject it, unless they send an email to the finance director, then it is incentivized in my mind. That there is an incentive to increase the COLA because the commissioners have received an 8% bump last year unless they send an email to the finance director, and they'll see, receive another 8% or perhaps 10%, which has been proposed today. So I've got a problem with that. I mean, it just doesn't sit well with me, and I've rejected the COLA in the past, and if it's affirmed by this board today, I will continue to do so as well. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from. I feel like it would be best to kind of go back to the drawing board and see if we can't get closer to revenue neutral. I know we're not going to get to revenue neutral. Yeah, I'm not unrealistic in that regard, but I do think we can do better than where we are. And so that's my point of view on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Scott?
I'm really going to be short. Last Thursday, I received a phone call, and the lady asked me, when was the schools going to replace the windows? I thought about that a very short, short time. I said, ma'am, I'm more concerned about putting the pupils at desk and having a computer in their hand where they can take home than replacing windows. We've got to take care of our school system, and this board is. We are investing in the most valuable asset that we have. That's our employees. They deserve a 10% across the table raise with a $15 minimum to start with. I totally support it. I thank my fellow commissioners that's going to vote that way. We need to work together to make this county better, and that's what I intend to do. And I thank you for everything that you do for us. I thank you for allowing us to serve you because we are making some, you know, some difficult decisions. But I tell you, Walter Scott read all those pages, and I've read more. So I am for this budget, but most of all, I'm for our citizens, and I'm for our county employees, and thank you for what you do, and I hope you do better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rick Anna?
Well, I made the motion, so I'm just going to stay with the motion. I'm going to keep it short myself, but I appreciate everybody. Being a public safety officer myself, and there's four of us up here that are all public safety, we know what's out there on the streets. We know what you need. We know what you want, and we're going to do everything we can to get it there. As I made the motion, and I always go that way, I'm always going to look out for these employees. I always will, and I always will, I keep that as long as I'm sitting there. As long as you keep electing me, I'm going to keep looking out for the employees and the citizens of Onslow County. Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
There's three things that makes the wheels go round in not only Onslow County but the nation. That is our education, our public safety, and our military. And they all have one major thing in common. And they all have one major thing in common: public service. And when it comes to a budget, what have they always looked at cutting first? Military, public safety, and education. What is the last thing that they've always wanted to increase? Funding for those people that provide that service. It's always military, public safety, and education. You remove any one of those three, you end this great experiment of the United States. And you end the United States, you end Onslow County. I appreciate Royce going out on the trucks with the folks at EMS. I think you learned a lot to watch y'all go through. But I've been on the other end of that these last few months. I've made that call to 911. I've seen your truck roll up in there in six to seven minutes in a cardiac, a heart attack. You got there, you saved that life. That life was put on a helicopter and flown out of here to New Hanover. And nine weeks later, and one quadruple bypass later, we're still living. Wasn't long after that, I had to call 911 again to get you to come to my mother's house. And again, you responded, and she was taken care of and transported to Onslow. And that's where she just got out of ICU the day before, and that was a two-and-a-half-week stay in ICU. Because at the end of the day, when it comes to this budget, I want to ensure that when somebody calls 911, the response is effective and efficient, and a life is saved. Or if it wasn't a life being saved, it was somebody being comforted that their life was not in peril. I do not take one minute for granted of what you provide to the community in Onslow County. That includes the fire service, and that includes the sheriff's office. You take on a role that not everyone wants to take on, because it is public service. You know going into it that you are going to work harder than most people out there and not get paid as much as others that do probably less. And there's probably a lot of you that if I asked you where you were born and raised, you'd say Onslow County. Because I will say that education and public safety lives and dies on the backs of those that are from their community, because this is where you want to be. Because if you didn't, you could have jumped ship, and you could have gone to another county, another state, another location. But this is your home. So you have been willing to continue to sacrifice what you have sacrificed, because this is your community. And I say that because I have done that for 31 years in the Onslow County school system. I could have packed up and left Onslow County and gone to another district and probably had an increase, or gone to another state and had another, had an increase. But I stayed home because I wanted to continue to provide that public service to my community. So for those of you that have stayed on, and I look out there, and I see a lot of you, some of you I've taught, some of you I know your parents, some of you I know, I mean, it's just so much that I see in the faces of you, the heartbeat of Onslow County. And then there's those of you that moved here because the military brought you here, but you didn't pack up and leave because it become your home. And you've stayed here to give back. This is our chance to recognize that we need to bring you as close as we can, if not this budget, but know that there's going to be opportunities to continue, because we want to keep you here. And we don't want to just keep you here because it's your home. We want to keep you here because this is the place you want to be. If we go to revenue neutral, which we already discussed, you can't do it. If we got down there, it's going to cost us, it's going to cost us about $3.2 million in our sales tax, because of how it's legislated and how it's set up. If we cut it to that, that's 3.2 million. We lose, and we're going to have to cut something somewhere. And I'll tell you where I don't want it to be cut at. I don't want it to be cut into supplement that the Board of Education just added to the teachers and their employees to keep them here. I don't want to cut and have one less bus on the road to save somebody's life. I don't want to cut because we have one less deputy that can respond. I don't want to cut because no one answers that call when the fire breaks out at your house. Because I will tell you this. Public safety is not important until you have to dial 911, and then that becomes the most important thing that you've ever done in your life. And if you haven't experienced it, you don't understand the significance of your people in public service. Because I told you, my last few months have been a little rough. One was a 911 call to the fire department or to dispatch to get the fire department out there. And I was getting ready to tee off and play some golf when I got the call, when I got back home. And I outran Southwest Volunteer Fire Department, but I sure do appreciate y'all showing up on scene. And I won't tell the sheriff how fast I was going to get back home. But the car had burst into flames in my mother's house that was built in 1965, was in peril. But they showed up effectively and efficiently, and that house still stands. I understand the fixed income, because that almost 83-year-old mother of mine, hopefully we'll get to a rehab center here shortly and we can get her back home, she's on a fixed income. But I can assure you, if she could hobble herself up to this microphone today, she'd be all about increasing pay. Because I can't remember the ladies that showed up, but they were professional, they were comforting, they were caring, and they did their job great. And it wasn't just because it was my mother, because I believe you do that for everybody. Because they didn't have a clue that was my mama. And the other thing I'll say to the citizens is when they show up, y'all can give me an amen. When you show up, just step back and let them do their job. Don't aggravate them with questions. Let them do their job, because they're the ones that's going to take care of it. So with all that being said, I appreciate what y'all do, from the sheriff's office to the fire service to EMS. It is imperative that when we call 911, race silences, people answer it, and they dispatch you to take care of us. And that brings me to another subject, is we're talking about funding of schools and this and that. Well, I can see something coming to us in the near future. And I hope Dr. Collins, he may raise his hand in the back like we're at worship service, but he's going to tell us that what's been on the front page and the front of the headlines the last couple of weeks. I can assure you that we're going to have to up the security measures at the schools if not for something that's happened or going to happen, but simply for what we need to be prepared for if it ever does happen. You don't ever want to be reactive. You better be proactive and pray it never comes to your house, just like having to call 911, which also includes the sheriff and the future sheriff. I see where we're going to end up needing full-time school resource officers on elementary campuses in Onslow County. It's not there yet, but I bet it's on the horizon. And how are you going to pay for it? You've got to take the opportunity to do that. I don't want to increase anybody's burden when it comes to taxes. And I've always said that we want to meet the needs of the citizens of Onslow County. No one ever will quote me for saying I wouldn't raise your taxes because I can't predict the future. No one, I didn't tell anyone I would go revenue neutral. I said our goal was to get it as low as possible. If that was the point, then that would be the point. But the point is, we should set it at a rate that meets the needs of the citizens of Onslow County and the standard of living that we expect that is causing people to move here. People ain't packing up and leaving. Just go down to Sneed's Ferry. If there's a piece of dirt, there's a house going up on it. And we don't, we yet have seen the influx of the military personnel that's coming to MARSOC. They still haven't arrived. They're still on the horizon. And if we just wait and kick the can down the road, it's going to cost us more. Because here's the great thing. If we're wrong, we're going to do another budget in a year, and we can reduce the tax rate. But if we're right, and I have to err on the side of Sharon's expertise and her team, if we are right, we won't have to raise this tax rate in the future, because we are forward-thinking and have a vision. My taxes are going to go up, just like everyone else's. But here's what's important to me. The two things that I can support: education and public safety. The incentive for our COLA is simple. I don't need it. This is a service. But you know what that COLA is? And this increase in pay is recognition of what you do as employees of Onslow County for the citizens of Onslow County. So when I say a COLA, and then the increase as far as merit pay, I guess is the terminology, I don't know. It's not. That's something else. But
Market adjustment.
Market adjustment. So we are going, or I'm going to support it. But the bottom line is, the incentive to me to increase your income is the job that you do. And when I call 911, you show up effectively and efficiently. So there's no doubt that I'm going to support the pay raise and this budget, because a lot of work was put into it, and it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Foster. Thank you for stealing my notes. Thank you, Robin Knapp, for stealing my notes. Now, I don't have nothing to say. I will say this. For the one, I'd like for all the ones that's here, that's in public safety, prior or currently in public safety, please stand up. Yeah. Please stand up. I want to thank you for your service and your endurance with the shortages and the pay that's been offered to you and all of what you do. I was in, and just about all of us up here is in some form of public service. I was in public service for 30 years. And I've been where you've been. I've done what you've done. And I did it because I love the work. It weren't a get-rich scheme, and I know none of you in it for to get rich. That's not part of what you're here for. You do it because you love the work. But I also know that you got to have money to put in your gas tank to come to work also. And I know you got to pay for groceries. That's absolutely gone sky-high now, like somebody had mentioned. We looked at the detention officers. We looked at the EMS folks. We looked at the sheriff's office. We looked at the Department of Social Services, the fire service. The fire service is so important to us. When we were looking at the Bear Creek Fire Station, and when the Bear Creek volunteers lost their certification from the new rules, basically, it was just new Department of Insurance rules. The county, with the help of the Bear Creek Board of Directors for the Bear Creek Fire Department, they decided to merge with Onslow County and keep their fire district, just one fire district now, one fire district, from going into ISO 10 rating, and to keep their ISO rating down to a six, I believe it was, what it was. But just that savings alone, for all of those people that lived in the Bear Creek Fire District, they saved, we saved them $4 million in premiums over what it would have been if they had went into the ISO 10 rating. So that's how important this three-cent fire dedication tax is to our volunteer fire departments. And it's going to help us down the road. And it's going to help the cities down the road, because the cities are part of it. And I did want to recognize one of the speakers. I thank all of you for coming up and speaking. But Ms. Clark is a former state senator, in case you didn't know. Thank you for your service. I don't know if anything can be done about city and county property tax. I think that's law. I think that's the way the law is. So I think that would have to be changed in order for that to, it's not under our control as far as the county goes. But it's a very good point, and a lot of people that live in the cities have a lot more things that they can, that they benefit from than the people in the county don't, as far as street lights and paving those local streets, and also with other things, garbage pickup and stuff like that, debris. But there is some amenities by living in the city that you don't get in the county. But the county serves everybody, and there's a lot of things that people live in the city that the county does provide. I go on and on about that. But that's basically what we were talking about with all the detention officers, EMS, Sheriff's Department, DSF, fire service. We didn't want to have a disparity between 8% cost of living with one group of people and giving another group of people a 10%. That really, to me, every county employee is just as important as another county employee. So everybody in the spectrum has got to, I think that would be really discriminatory to give one group of people more than you do another. So I, I'm glad that Commissioner Buchanan made the motion, and I think Commissioner Scott made the second. So now, I will call for the vote. And we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we have a 61. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a budget. Thank you. And I have been summoned by some of my board members to take another short 10-minute break. Be back in 10 minutes.